Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August the 21st to order. Roll call.
Call's number Duncan.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Holst.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
All second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And seeing there's no one here tonight that wishes to speak, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is item six on the agenda this evening. The items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be moved and replaced on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending August the 17th, 2012. Item B, the meeting minutes for the August 7th, 2012 city council meeting. Item C, the meeting minutes for the August 7th, 2012 city council work session. Item D, the cable franchise renewal. Item E, the men worn mutual aid agreement. Item F, maintenance to promotion. Item G, application for payment number nine for the 2011 West Side Street Improvements project. Item H, application for payment number one for the library construction project. Item I, Resolution 1975, approving conditional use permit for Cannon Falls Aggracenter. And item J, introduction and first reading of ordinance 322, amending outdoor dining facilities. Are there any items anyone wishes to bring down this evening?
D, E, and G.
Okay, so, I don't, D will become item seven A. Item E will become item seven B. And item G will become item seven C.
And I.
And I will become seven D. Anything else? With the exception of items D, E, G, and I, which remove to item, to become item seven for council business, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Reports will move, will become item eight on the agenda, and adjournment will be nine. That will move us to item seven A, which is the cable franchise renewal.
Um, do we automatically do that, Aaron? Do we own the cable system? Does MediaCom own it? How does all that work? I mean, is this something that we have any options on? Are we getting to the point where, um, because of the airwaves, there's other options? Or is this, how does this all work?
Okay, so cable companies own everything. They own the lines, they own all their equipment, all those sort of things. So generally speaking, you have one cable provider in a community just because there's only one set of lines. It's, it's not cost effective for two cable companies to install two sets of lines that run right next to each other, do all those sort of things. It just doesn't work. I mean, you can't find many large metro areas with more than one cable provider. It's just kind of how it works. Franchises are basically our only way to have any sort of control over what the cable company does. There's a real large set of federal legislation that kind of controls cable franchising and how that all works. It's an important process to go through when the franchises are up. Generally, the franchises are fairly long term. So, you know, you're looking at a 10-plus year agreement, and what you want to do is make sure that you get the right agreement in place up front. Because it does control things like what they supply us to use, so we can televise our public events, sporting events, those sort of things. It controls what they pay us for the franchise fees, so we can cover our costs to do those sort of things. So it definitely is an important process to go through, and unfortunately, when your franchise is up, you gotta do it. You know, you have to go through it. It's a process you have to do. The cable company always sends you their basic franchise, which gives you nothing, and obviously is in their best interest and not ours, which is why we have to go through the process. It's three-year process is, it's basically what it is. It's, that's, the federal law requires us to start negotiating that far out, and you gotta honestly, it just takes that long to work it all out. So, yeah, it is something we have to do.
And I should mention that if people are looking at the budget, we do think it's in our best interest to hire a law firm skilled in these negotiations because the complications that ensue if you don't do it, and the fact that you need somebody on your side who's familiar, has experience in these matters. So, that's why the Cable Commission voted to have a experienced law firm represent us in these. And they're billed according to how many hours they spend on our problems. We call them in on certain problems, they'll, they'll be there.
Well, one- The one thing I'd like to bring up is that, so basically, we're wired for the town through MediaCom. If we decided someday to not be a part of this anymore, is there any options as far as, can we do our, our council meetings through direct TV, or is there any other options? Or are we pretty much stuck with this, and this what we got?
Well, the only option would be is if we just filmed it ourself and say, just livestreamed it over, like, through our website. But there's nothing for, you know, as far as the competition for cable, which is, like you said, your dish providers, they don't have any requirements for local access, and I'm not even sure how that would work with the dishes, but they won't do it, and they don't have to do it. They're different, we don't franchise those guys. They're under a different set of laws, they're a different thing. We basically have no real control over those. So you're, you're basically stuck working with whatever company has come into town. That's pretty much how it is.
What, what would happen, a few years ago, there was the thought of this Hiawatha broadband coming through. What if a company like that wanted to come through and we already have a cable company in place?
You could have competitive franchises. If for some reason a company wanted to come, we can do the, we can have a franchise with them as well.
Okay.
So we can, you can't have more than one provider. It's not that you can't, it's just that because of the economics of it, you just don't.
Right, I do-
But if the Hiawatha broadband or something like that came through, where it's a smaller company and they're kind of coming in using federal money, basically, to do it, that, which makes it feasible for them to do it, then yep, we just franchise with them the same way we-
This is my understanding, they're entering Red Wing now, and it's, it was talked about doing it here, which broadband to me is better than cable.
Right. Yep, so we could, we're not locked in only one company. If another company wants to come in, we can work with them the same way we work with MediaCom.
Well, the only thing I wanted to point out tonight is that, sometimes, on service calls, if people are having a bad cable day, I gotta stand there and listen to their cable problems for 15 minutes. And that seems to happen quite often. So I would, I would be concerned that I think everybody tries to do their best they can, but I'm not so sure that service and, and stuff couldn't be a little better with MediaCom than what it is.
Yep.
Merlin's brought up one time about not receiving high definition when we're supposed to be getting that. There's different things like that.
Yep.
So I, I also know that I think when I started off with cable back in the 1400s, it was like $18 a month. And of course, everybody knows what cable is today. And there's really not a cheap cable out there. I mean, the basic cable is probably 70 bucks a month now. So I was just kind of curious, in these negotiations, if we do have some leverage and we do have some things we can express, not to try to get rid of them, but to make it all a better system for everybody. Otherwise, you get people that get dissatisfied, and then all of a sudden go to dish and everything else, and here you're sitting with your cable. So we're in, we're all in this together, and I, I think there can be some improvements made.
Yep, and that is part of the process. We can definitely address issues that we have. We can try to work in requirements as far as, you know, response time to phone calls, to service calls, things like that. So those are all things we can definitely talk about during this process.
You know, I, there were some other places, not just in here, but I mean, MediaCom's all over the country, and I know Savannah, Georgia had a lot of complaints, and they were looking at throwing them out. I mean, so I mean, if it takes to that point to look and say, hey, guys, either you clean your act up, or we're not going to franchise you again, you know, I mean, we can do that. I mean, we have that right. I mean, I think we should push, because I know those HD channels have been brought up before, and I think during this negotiation process, that's one of the big issues we need to push, is saying, hey, you know, if there's HD channels there, we want them in Cannon Falls, and if you don't want to give them to us, then, you know, lower your price, or, or move out.
What we get is not a true HD.
No.
You pay for it, but you don't get it. But I would say that anybody that does have trouble with their MediaCom cable, to call in. Don't stand and complain to Leroy. Don't stand and complain to your, to your neighbor. Call in.
Right.
I'm having trouble with, with tiling and stuttering on the HD channels, and they think I'm crazy because I'm the only one that complains. All my neighbors don't have any problems, you know. All my neighbors don't call in.
Right.
They just put up with it.
Right.
And that's not right.
No, you're paying, you're paying for a premium service. You should get it.
And the thing with them, though, I think they're only in town two days a week to service. So if you're not, you have to wait.
Definitely, those are all things we can address as part of this process now.
Yeah.
We've got our chance now to deal with it, so this is, this is when we gotta bring all this up and get it worked out.
Yeah, because we are locked in. You know, there's-
Right.
I mean, some people are capable of getting the dishes. I can't. I've got trees in the way and I can't get it.
Yep. Nope, this is a time to address all those issues as part of this franchise. We can definitely do that.
They said the last time it was really a mess to get it done.
It is.
That's why we had lawyers.
It's real long, and it's a, they make it messy.
Yeah.
You know, they don't make it easy for us, which is why, like we said, you, there's attorneys that specialize in just this.
Yeah, I believe it was last on the early 2000s, like 2003 or something like that.
Yeah, I think, I think it all needs to be addressed. I'm glad the council, the rest of council feels that way, too. I'm hoping for the best. But another little service story I can give you is that every four years, we have the cable that goes up through the woods from our house up to the top of the hill. And I don't know, there's a squirrel up there watching cable, or just likes that cable. But every four years, he takes it out, and every four years, they tell me I have to be there at a certain time, or they can't come in the house, and I tell them I'll just leave it open, come there, but they can't do that. So they come, and the first thing they want to do is they want to go through all my cables in my house, and I tell them, it's a four-year deal, this squirrel up on the hill. And I almost have to convince them to go outside and test for that. And every time they come back down the hill, they say, oh, squirrel chewed that off up there. So I'm a little tired of that. I just love my cable to work, you know. I don't want to hear about this squirrel now.
You know, I mean, they make enough people mad, and they, and they will get dropped. I mean, I dropped them a long time ago, just because of the service I got from MediaCom.
I get a dish.
So, but you know, I, I think that they need to clean up their act a little bit and try to give us better service, I mean, for the money we pay with that. So I mean, I think we need to really have these guys push for us.
Still keeps going up.
It never gets any smaller.
Yep. So at this time, if there's no other discussion, I will re, request a motion approving the attached proposal from Kennedy and Graven to assist the city with our cable franchise renewal.
All move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brings us to item seven B, which is the men worn. Leroy?
That one there, Aaron, I was reading about that, about cities working together and, and all that different stuff. I only had about 20 minutes to read it tonight. But I was a little confused by it. I, I, to me, it seems more like suburbs up in the cities, if somebody has a well go down, or a sewer go down, or something happens, they, they want to work together to do things. But out here, I didn't quite know how it fit us.
You know, most of it is a tornado. Something like that happens, natural disaster. You know, you have something like that occur, you know, a tornado hits Umbroda, you know, their, their crew is overwhelmed, just trying to do, you know, clean up stuff, and they need help getting their water system back online, getting their wastewater up. They need their, their storm sewers jetted out, something like that. It covers emergencies, basically. So if there's some sort of natural disaster, something like that, we can go help one of our neighboring communities, and if something goes wrong, we've got this agreement in place that's set up through the state, so there's no questions. All the insurance works out, you know, all those things get all worked out without having to, you know, try to fight about it later. Everybody knows upfront, you know, statewide, this is how it's going to work. So that's what it's for. It's really for natural disasters, things like that.
The only, the only complicated part is the way they set up possibly the, the amount of, of money and that they figure on the equipment evaluation, those things. Who decides those, those issues on something like that? Time spent for our labor crew cleanups and stuff like that?
Right. You know, as a city, we get to submit, you know, our costs for, you know, our, our staff time, you know, those sort of things. And then equipment itself would be, just be based on value. So, you know, if something happens to a piece of equipment, League of Minnesota State's insurance adjuster says, this is a value in that equipment. This is what it costs, what it's worth, that sort of thing.
They, but, and the payments go, like, like FEMA payments or something from the federal or state would go to the city?
Yep.
And, and the city would, if they used the, the money for something else, like helping out another city, that would be our business to-
Eventually, it would get to us.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
The one thing is with it, Aaron, is most of the time in those situations, don't cities help themselves out or are really good about doing that? So this is more or less some kind of a state insurance plan to guarantee a payment or something?
You know, basically, if something happened in Umbroda, we're going to go help. We would have helped without this. But this just makes sure that if for some reason we get there and something happens, it's, it's taken care of. We don't have to worry about working it out later. We just know it's covered now. We don't have any, there's not any question about going to help and get it done. We would anyways, and if something happened, we'd have to try to work it out later, but in this case, it's clear. There's, there's no issues with it.
So in other words, if you went there and in a crisis or something, some wrong valve got turned or something, everybody's on the same page, and they can't come back and sue you, and that type of stuff. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, the Chair will take a motion approving the men worn mutual aid agreement as presented.
So, second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That brings us to item seven C, the application for payment number nine for the West Side Street Improvement Projects.
That I, I talked to Greg a little bit about. It seems to me like things kind of went into a standstill up there. It seems, it seems like things were really moving well. Things were going well. Got some complaints from people, got some compliments from people on the way things were going. And then the sod issue, they were worried about the summer being dry and the sod burned, would burn up, so they held off on the sod. And actually, the summer we had would have been a great year to put down sod, but you don't know that. But I told Greg a couple of weeks ago that some of the residents were irritated, especially on the hills, that they weren't getting sod. I told him that I thought we had to do something, either sod it, or, or blow in a straw or something. And then the second coat doesn't seem to get done now, and I see by the payment, we're at like 88%. So I, I'd like to know that how come everything has just stalled here for some-
It was basically, well, one, you wait for that lift as long as you can, you know, just to let everything settle as much as possible on the road. And as far as the sod goes, it was that. You worry that you put it out too soon, it's August, July, August, it's going to fry, people aren't going to water it, then you gotta come back and do it again. So the contractor doesn't, won't do it. It's, you know, they just know they'll have to come back and do big sections again. But that's the only reason the delay was there. And actually, I think they're out this week now. They're sodding this week, they're doing the, the last wear course should be going on soon. They're getting the mailboxes back put up. So they are back out now, and hopefully, I think by next week sometime, most of it should be done with.
So the second layer and everything will be all done by next week?
I don't know about the whole second layer by next week, but the sod and the mailboxes and stuff should be, and then the second layer should be within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, the Chair will take a motion approving payment number nine for the 2011 West Side Street Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Bill, second by Merle. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And that brings us to item seven D, which is Resolution 1975, approving conditional use permit for the Cannon Falls Aggracenter.
For the what?
For the Aggracenter. Is that what you wanted to bring down?
That's right, yeah. I was just wondering about that, how that changes the, the nature of the business and about safety or health conditions.
Oh, it changes the existing business at that location.
Right. Basically- Will there be more traffic, and will there be any health considerations or precautions taken?
Yeah, there's two building additions proposed that you read about in the memorandum, two existing buildings, about 6,500 square foot one building, and the second building's about 5,800 square feet. So there will be more building on that site. And then the third change on the site is they're going to install a weigh station, so primarily during the fall time of the year, as trucks are coming in and out of that site, there will be a weigh station that hadn't been there before. So when we held the public hearing of the Planning Commission, we talked about the storage of materials in both of the new additions, as well as the weigh station. And along with the conditions placed in the resolution, I have since talked to Doug Gilbertson, and I think they've definitely heard the concerns of the Planning Commission and understand that they're going to have to do some things beyond what they've proposed at this point relative to, kind of softening up the impact of the neighborhood, particularly on the weigh station, and also on the safety side, particularly in the, in the building that will be storing the liquid-
Yeah, that's what I was concerned with.
-plant foods. That there will be a Department of Agriculture permit that needs to be issued, and they need to submit plans that obviously the building official will look at and make sure that they're in compliance with state law for safety. So I think with all the conversation that we had at the, the Planning Commission level, there was, there was a lot of concern for that, and they definitely heard that. And I think if the permit is approved, we'll see in the next couple of weeks, the final details, plans and specs on the overall site development.
The people around there have some say in? Did they have the-
They were all notified of the hearing. We had one adjoining property owner came in, was not a residential property owner, that, that had some questions that I think we responded to and took care of. But otherwise, they had no calls, and, and no one else came in from the neighborhood.
Did they have to conform to just, did they have to conform to federal and state regulations, right?
State regulations, both in terms of Department of Ag requirements for the type of product that they're, that they're retailing there, and then of course, just the normal building code requirements for construction of the additions.
But there will be more truck traffic, a lot more truck traffic, yeah?
Um, you know, we talked about that, and, and they're not anticipating a huge increase. Again, that's a seasonal traffic flow on, on that site, as it had been with ag partners. And they're anticipating, even though they're expanding some of their retail capabilities, that they're not projecting, you know, a doubling, a tripling, a quadrupling of, of traffic in and out of there, so.
It didn't sound like it'd be any more traffic than was there before. There would be one train a week that, one train a week coming in. The biggest concern the Planning Commission had about it was the store, the liquid fertilizer they were going to store, the vapors or smell coming off that, and that the building would be curbed in case there'd be a leak, and there would be a holding, illegal holding pond to catch this if something happened. And the Gilbertsons were all made aware of our concerns that night, especially about the chemical end of it, and the smell. And so I, I don't know where they come from now, but I think we had a very good discussion that night, and I think everybody's on the right page.
It's not an hyd, an hydras that they're storing there.
No, an hydras. And he talked about his natural organic fertilizer that was going to be stored there. And we even questioned that and read off the name of it, and felt there was a little bit of a, a title being put on something that wasn't necessarily completely organic. So we did even question that, and wanted to make sure that the EPA follows up with this on how this stuff would be handled if there was a leak and stuff like that, so. It was very well discussed and a lot of concerns, and I think it kind of headed in the right, right direction.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Cannon Falls Aggracenter.
All move. Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item eight A, reports. Mr. Maroney?
Like you saw in the meeting schedule, the Planning Commission now has changed their starting time from 7:00 to 6:30. That'll start in, in September. And then if I could just see Bill after the meeting for a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Bad boy.
Jeff?
Couple of things last, oh, no, what, two weeks ago, we had National Night Out. There were five parties. The, the event went very well. Hopefully, next year, we can get a few more parties. Our numbers have been down the last couple of years, and we'd love to see those get back up. The other thing is, believe it or not, school's going to be starting up in two weeks. And I just want to remind people that are watching, that it's going to be back to school time. Kids are going to kind of return back into their patterns. We're going to see some complaints of driving and that type of thing that we always see at the beginning of the school year. If there's something occurring in your neighborhood, please call us and let us know. It helps us track down where the problem areas are.
Did we, I know we had discussed some of the traffic sign issues, and those have all been addressed now with both Minnesota and Water Street?
I think they, they've been addressed on the ones that we can resolve.
Okay.
There's still some things the schools talked about doing, but I don't know if they've put it in place or not. I'm going to be meeting with the superintendent next week, and that was one of the things we were going to be talking about, was as they get ready for their back-to-school year issues that were carried over from, from the spring.
Just a reminder, everybody driving out there, school buses, arms will be coming out, so don't go flying by the school buses with the arms out, because it's costly.
Hey Jeff, I just had a quick thing for you. I heard from one of the officers that they ended up on a high-speed chase, and there was some concerns how the new SUV would work out in that situation. And I was told that it performed very well, and was able to hang in there, and worked out well.
Yep. The, the results from, from our pursuit, it wasn't the primary car, but it was a secondary vehicle. It's a V6, so it's a little different. They're, they're used to the V8s. The feedback from the officers have been very positive on it. From that experience, what we learned is it can hold its own. The officer that was driving it was very impressed with his, the way it's handle and acceleration. And the speeds in the hundreds, he said it was similar to driving a Crown Vic in the 90s. So it actually handles better than our Crown Vics.
Yeah, that was good to hear.
Leroy, anything else?
I was, I was wondering how we're coming with the Wilson situation. Is that fairly stable, or?
We, the, the date passed when the cleanup and things had to have occurred, so I was in court last week, and we, we got a new order to allow staff on to the property, basically an administrative search warrant, to allow us to enter the property to document if any of the, the compliance work has been done or not. So that was done last week. We did go on-site, documented it. Clearly, you know, we couldn't tell from the road, you just can't see it. So we went out, served this, served the search warrant on them. We, they did, staff did the inspection. We'll send that tape off to the city attorney, but nothing has been done. So now we'll be going back to court again to get the order to allow us to do the cleanup on the site. So now we'll be going back to court again to get the order to allow us to do the cleanup on the site. So that'll take another month or so to, to run through that process. And our, our guess is by this fall, we'll, we'll have the authority to go, go ahead and do the cleanup ourselves, and we'll be doing that.
And where is Dom with all this?
He knows.
Was he there that day that you checked everything?
Yep.
Okay. The other question I got for you, Aaron, is I remember one time, when we were talking about this overpass out here, that I suggested that Cannon Falls Township have their own suburb, and we'd sell them the sewer and the water. And nobody seemed to like that idea. But I found it kind of interesting, because last week, Casson Manor, or Manorville has a very expensive sewer problem down there, as far as what they have to invest in their sewer system. And other small towns, I believe it was La Crescent is another one that's got the same problem. And it was a, a thing where, I believe it was like seven, seven or eight million to update it, or otherwise, they could go the two to three miles and hook into the Casson Manor, or Casson plant, and become a suburb of Casson. So I just wanted to say that I think that's being done out there, but not that we should change or buy down, leave Cannon Falls Township hang out there, but I did think that maybe Cannon Falls Township should think about being their own suburb, we'll sell them the sewer and the water. It's a little bit late now, but. It's just kind of interesting, in these small towns, I actually feel bad for them. There was one on the news tonight where it's only a town of like twenty-five hundred, and the cost to update these plants is, is so expensive. And of course, all the funding and stuff from, from federal and state, nobody wants to give out the money nowadays. Nobody wants to help, so it's completely being put back on these small towns. And if there's one thing I can say to the citizens of Cannon Falls, that the past council, when they decided to update our system, we might have awfully expensive sewer and water bills right now, but I can tell you, if we had to do it today, the sewer and water bills would really be a lot higher.
Well, and the other, other cities, not just the small ones, but even the medium-sized, ten, twenty thousand, they're going to find very similar problems when they try to, need to update their systems.
Right.
We're kind of ahead of the curve in that way, so.
Yeah, we're ahead of the curve, but we're also ahead on the bill right now.
Well, that will-
It's going to look good when the rest of them just-
They will catch up, they will catch up to us.
That's it, thank you.
Phil?
I, I just was wondering, when I was looking at the, at the budget log here, you see all these purchases from Ace, or Ace Hardware, right? Why are we not purchasing from our longest, longest-lived retail establishment here in town?
We actually pretty much balance it out fairly equally.
Do we?
When we have the audit done, the auditor actually looks at that. That's one of the things they review, is to make sure that we're not only, we're not just purchasing from one store, because if you do, what's the reason for that, that sort of thing? So actually, our purchases are pretty much balanced out among the different hardware stores in town.
Do they make sure that they do that?
It's very, very even.
Good, I hope so, because they've been paying taxes in this town a long time.
We keep it as very even as possible, we spread it out.
All right, that's a good thing. The other thing was, was a, was what, four thousand two hundred and fifty for the Cannon Falls Historical Society, what was that for exactly?
Um, every year, it's one of our contracts that we have, kind of like the contract we have with the Chamber of Commerce. So it's just for them providing the Historical Society services, we make a payment to have that serviced.
Is that for the year?
Museum and those sort of things.
That's for the whole year for?
Yep.
It used to be slightly higher than that, but we did, one of those years, cut it down a little bit.
Yep, we did.
Thank you.
I saw today, a lot of steel went up in the library, that's good. That's all I got.
Merle?
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing tonight.
And I have nothing, and with that, the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I brought that same thing up a few years ago.
Wait, what, the hardware?
About rotating all the hardware stores, so.